Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you would please stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
Clark Strick, would you mind leading us in a word of prayer before our meeting?
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening. We thank you for the responsibility that you've given to us to help with the county, with the citizens of county, with our business operate. We will be asking your guidance and blessing, all said and done, ready that everything can be done in good order, with honor and you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to open the meeting and again, welcome everybody to the Hampshire County Commission meeting Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. And to get started, we will look at the minutes. The minutes were drafted digital and each commissioner had a copy of those to review. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve or make any corrections we saw that were needed.
Mr. President, I believe the minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the minutes from our previous commissioners' meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. And now we will move on to the president's report and the commissioners' report. So I'll start. Since our last meeting approximately two weeks ago, we closed out the Board of Equalization and Review concerning tax assessments. We do that every year from February. All three commissioners are involved in that, and we had very few to review this year. One thing I'll make note of is the state forestry department sent out notices on forestry. And however, their timing of this did not meet the requirements of code for the letters they sent out. So another notice was followed again from the state, and they will be asking counties to make that adjustment next year, not this year. So some of you may have dealt with those letters, but that's what that was about. Also, I didn't have any other of my monthly meetings in the past between this one and the last one, but I have fielded a number of phone calls, emails, and conversations pertaining to some different things on the ongoing process of the three new elementary schools. However, we have a spot on the agenda for that, so I won't expand on that at this time. Last thing I have is I just want to point out again, like I did at the beginning of our last meeting, that we are live now. A little camera there on the right facing the commissioners, which gives you this view, and a camera. Where is the other one? Oh, it's up there by the eagle that gives the audience that view for those who wish to come up and speak to the board here. Just a little feedback, last meeting, that being live was our first time, and seems like it went fairly trouble-free. Had a little audio trouble there at the end. And I think the feedback we're getting is most of the commissioners can be heard fairly well. When the audience speaks or when someone is coming up to the table here, it's maybe not as easy to hear them. So you might expect to have me ask you to speak into the microphone if you're one of the folks coming up to talk to us. But I'm glad we did this. I think it's a good improvement for small government here in the county. And, you know, allows a lot more people to listen, you know, that and combined with us having our evening meetings. And I think it's important because for those that like to take it upon themselves to report on social media their rendition of what happened in a county meeting, I think this keeps them a little more honest. So all around a good thing, even though I don't like being on camera. But I think it's a good thing for our small local government here. With that, I'll pass it on to Commissioner Hott.
Okay, I did a few meetings this last, well, in the last couple of weeks. One of the meetings I did was the 911, the 911 committee meeting, advisory committee meeting. The main thing we discussed there was the mapping and addressing. We've had some problems with that, so the 911 director is initiating corrective action for that. I attended a Region Eight Real Development Meeting in Petersburg. The main thing we discussed there was Region Eight usually gets grant funding for the hazard mitigation. They get a grant for that, and that pertains to our flood plain and flood control, and also pertains to people being able to get flood insurance. And this year, the grant came up short, so they're going to be asking each county for $1,500 additional, and also each municipality for $1,500 initially to so that they can get the funding back, so that they can make sure that we can do the hazard mitigation. I attended the HCSA meeting. Mr. Malcolm's going to be here later on, so he'll update us on that. Historic Landmark Commission met. They had a presentation of the George Washington Trail. The gentleman wanted to put up signs for the George Washington Trail. There was no decision made there concerning that. They tabled that for the time being. And then I attended a budget training seminar at Martinsburg with the county clerk and two of the county clerk deputies. And then last night, I attended the Eastern Community Action Board meeting where we discussed the strategic plan progress and also the community action plan for the agency. Other than that, and some phone calls, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hott. Commissioner Cannon?
Thank you, Commissioner. I attended the Committee on Aging meeting. Main developments there were Ashley Anderson is the new Upper Potomac Area Agency on Aging Director. She came to introduce herself. The previous director stepped down, which was a sight for sore eyes because she's our, sort of our liaison and advocate to the state. And she just sort of went over how she envisions her position. And she's going to try to come to a lot more of our meetings, which will give us better representation with the state. The Romney Senior Center Kitchen, I did speak with Delegate Thorne and Delegate Helen Brand. They've been really busy with the legislative session, and he wanted me to give him a couple more weeks on that. But he did assure me that if he did strike out, he would at least pledge $10,000 of his discretionary funding. His $25,000 they give each delegate. But gentlemen, we may just, it may have been futile, but I tried to challenge our new delegates to help us with the kitchen. But as Commissioner Hott said, you know, it's our building and maybe a valiant effort, but we may end up taking the blow, the brunt of the blow on the cost of that. But nevertheless, I certainly put a lot of time into it, and so has Delegate Thorne and Helen Brand. This year, the seniors are going to have a seniors farmer's market, which I'm learning more about that, which I thought that was pretty neat. And then also Mineral County is going to be holding a senior Olympics. So for all you 60 and older seniors that fancy yourselves Olympians, you want to race in a 40-yard dash or something to that effect, you can reach out to me, and I'll I'll lead you to the powers that be. I did, I had a planning meeting and I happened to run into Larry C. Just got a little quick update from him on the HVC project. That's, as we know, we had a pretty big disparity between contractors, so just kind of got an update on that, and the low bidder, they feel very comfortable with this gentleman, and everything seems to be going along as planned. But when you get a real big disparity or you have a low bidder, you sometimes concerns a lot of people. And I think in this case, it's not what people would think where you have a fly-by-the-eye contractor. We just had a guy on the high end that was really shooting for the stars with his inflated bid. And anyways, I also spoke to the prosecutor. She had some staff concerns. I reached out to the commissioners. I believe the prosecutor's on the agenda, so I'm not going to go into that. Senator Manchin's office has reached out to sign on to endorse our hydrogen project with the PBTA Transportation Authority. And Keith McIntosh reached out to me today, actually, to talk about earmarks and federal funding for 2024. And I reached out to the sheriff and Darren Taylor, the director of the day report, and Eileen Johnson and all those people to see if they could find some of the congressional delegated spending accounts and see if they pertained to anything in their offices. And there is a Zoom meeting tomorrow that I plan to attend at 10:00 a.m. with the senator. It kind of schools the applicants on how best to apply to his program, the way he's trying to implement it here. He's kind of made it, dumbed it down and made it pretty easy to apply, so I'll be attending that. I also had County Infrastructure, which, not going to get too long-winded. But we did get Lot 1 in the industrial park removed completely from the flood plain, and it is up for sale. The, I did talk to the mayor, that the town gave a pretty long brief, the town of Romney, that is. One of their big things right now is they're looking to secure funding to overhaul their pool. They want to completely renovate their pool, which pertains to Hampshire County because according to their statistics, most of their individuals that come, or clients, if you will, that come to the pool are county citizens rather than town citizens. And they've had an issue with securing the ground for their bulk water project. Because I noticed that we allocated the money and she hasn't spent any, the mayor hadn't, the town hasn't spent any of that money. So they've had a problem with some land easements, and that's what's holding that up. But they do have till 2026 to spend that. And then also, I gave sort of a county brief to the, what all we're doing, to the infrastructure committee. I did talk to chairman of the school board, Ed Morgan, about, we had some miscommunications between the development authority. And I think it got sensationalized in the paper that somehow our land deal was going to fall through, but we sort of squashed those rumors. And then there were some miscommunications about the wording, additional contaminants was read. And to be fair, the wording wasn't there, but for the public, there's three separate phases to the removing, the removal of the contaminants. And the type of contaminants that are removed are determined by the funding agency. So that, so there's multiple phases to the contaminants, and it just, there was some confusion, and the deal's still on. I also spoke with Ed and Matt Tremble about the school issues and bathroom, which we're going to get into, I'm sure, pretty heavily later, so I'll save that. And Commissioner Agneger and Hott touched on our last Board of Equalization review. We adjourned, signed and die. No major hiccups there. Other than the standard 20 to 30 calls a week and hour and a half of food line briefing the community on what we're doing, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cannon. Next, we have Beth Reese, River House Economics and Arts Benefits. Would you like to come up?
Thank you. I brought us residents, but they'll come up to make sure they can be heard when it's their turn.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Beth.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Agneger, Cannon, and Hott. I appreciate you giving us time. This is hopefully all good news. We're, we have come to let you know about the success in Cape and Bridge of both economic development and also the health of the community because of an infusion of the arts. So we're here both to let you know the good news that's happening in Cape and Bridge, but also to advocate for the arts generally. And I'm probably preaching to the choir, but I wondered, what I did was I brought you some handouts with some data and information that you could look at later so that I don't sit here and give you a lot of data points, but I'll refer to what I'm giving you. May I bring them to you?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So commissioners, I'm the co-founder and professional volunteer at The River House, which is a nonprofit community arts and music center exactly where the Green Bridge is being worked on. No one knew where we were before. You now know. We're thrilled about the renovation of the bridge. It does make it a little hard to get into The River House right now, but we'll be patient. So what I've brought you is some information about the impact of The River House, which was a neglected, dilapidated building that is now a community center surround that is themed with the arts, but it's also become a meet and greet place for everybody. And then the second half of the packet is actually some data about the economic impact of the arts, both nationally and in West Virginia. And then our board member Travis Delaplane, who I'm sure you know, the president of FNB Bank. He put together a paper about the positive impact on the economy there in Cape and Bridge in the last five years. So The River House, I hope you've been there, and if not, I hope you will come. It is, it was community-built, and it is community-run as a nonprofit. The building picture is right there on your rack card. And it belonged to the Giffen family, four generations. Used to be part of the funeral home, then that moved up, and then it was neglected. And a group of community members started renovating it, not quite sure what it was going to be. And the building and the community said, we want participatory arts. So our mission is to create a welcoming space where participation in the arts, that participation part is important, inspires deep community connections and nourishes the lives of individuals and families. So there are three words in there I want you to know about because it's also, we believe, and we've been told from Charleston, that it's a very replicable model for other small towns. So the welcoming part, the arts have the power of transcending all the boxes our culture might want to put us in. Nobody talks about politics or religion. Nobody tells them not to. It just kind of doesn't come up. People are doodling at the tables. They're listening to novices hopping up on the stage at open mic. They're sipping espresso drinks, and there's a lot of networking going on. People that mill wood at their farm, talking to instrument makers. And all of that's happening in this building because we are honoring the power of the arts. And of course, that's an Appalachian legacy to make music together. And then the other is the participation part. As opposed to maybe just coming and looking at art, we have 70% of what we offer is free to the community. And the first three pages kind of illustrate that. We made our five-year anniversary last year, and this first page just shows some bullet points of the impact. We took our breath away once we counted those up. But a couple that I'll point out is 1,283 events, 70% of them for free to the community in those five years. 1,500 Hampshire County school students. We go into the schools and they come to us for arts education. Over 50 volunteers are devoted to working there and all the health benefits of volunteering. And then one other is 149, almost $150,000 supporting local artists. And we sell things for them. We provide opportunities for them to come and set up, and we also hire them. So that's our little orange building. It's pretty awesome. And I just gave you a sample of what a couple of weeks looks like there and an event that we're doing that honors old-time music. So then the second half of your packet, I don't expect for you to keep up with all of this because I'm a little paper-heavy, but I want you to have it to back it up, both for yourself, but also as you talk to constituents or other decision-makers. But this is wonderful. This is an op-ed. It's called Artistic Voices Raise the Creative Economy in West Virginia. And this was written by our executive director, Monica Wilson, who's a professional photographer also, and Adam Booth, who you may know. He has won for the last four years the Liars Award in West Virginia. He's a popular storyteller, but he's also a professor up in Shepherd. And what they're doing is they're pointing out from an artist's point of view how important the arts are, both to support artists, but also the health of communities and the whole creative economy. So I just want to point out two things in here, and then I'll stop with the data. So nationally, these are 2020 numbers, so you can imagine how much higher they are after COVID. But in 2020, arts and cultural economic activity nationwide contributed 4.2% of our GDP. I don't think people realize that. And in West Virginia alone, arts and cultural production added 1.3 billion to the state's economy and 13,000 jobs, just in that one year. And then lastly, a highlight in this op-ed, and this will, this has been sent to newspapers all over West Virginia. And The River House is highlighted in here also. We have two full-time and six part-time employees with $152,000 in gross wages just in '22. So you, and you saw our impact statement. So the economic development in our town and our region, according to our bank president, eight creative enterprises have been, seven of them have been started. One of them has been renovated in the last five years, including a craftsman butcher, who's now regionally known, and an arts product store, and our building, and a music, Appalachian Music School. So our vision is a thriving community inspired by the arts, and as you can see, it's happening. And I know Romney is very involved in that also. And then the last page is about arts and health. You may intuit it, you may experience it yourself, but the World Organization, the World Health Organization has a lot of research. And the one that I wanted to just point out is social capital. I love that phrase. But we have all kinds of capital in our life that we seek, but social capital is what happens when you have relationships, healthy relationships, not just with family. And there's something called the third place, another place where they know your name, kind of like Cheers, and you feel welcome and you feel like you can be yourself. And how important that is to mental health and as an antidote for isolation and loneliness, especially after COVID. So that was my little commercial for The River House and the arts. But what's most important is to hear from a couple residents, if you don't mind, who have experienced it personally. And I first want to introduce, this is Gus Peabody, 15 years old, a very talented musician and artist and a part of the River House family. And his father, Alex Peabody, who's a talented father and all kinds of other things, and their big family is very involved in The River House. I'll let you come up here so you can be heard.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to hear from me. In order to save time, I'll just read off of what I've already written. My wife and I moved to Cape and Bridge in 2005. We brought three children with us, and we added 13 more in the years since. We liked Cape and Bridge because of its peacefulness and its elbow room, which we knew our children would need, which we couldn't find in Winchester. And when The River House was built in 2017, it added something to our community, which my wife and I took advantage of immediately. Arts and crafts events brought out excitement and imagination in our young children. Paintings began appearing all over the house, sometimes on the walls. The concerts created a place of relaxation and celebration, which my wife and I enjoyed, and then our teenagers. When my oldest daughter was married, she decided to stay in Cape and Bridge, partly because of the love for our community, which The River House helped flourish. She's now a mother and brings my grandchildren in the summertime to the outdoor arts and crafts festivals. My teens have grown and moved to Virginia, but they keep their eyes on the concert announcements, and they gather their friends, they buy tickets, and they return to Cape and Bridge in order to take part in the events and the celebrations that they have there. They bring their friends with them, so our friends have, their friends have an understanding of Cape and Bridge that's presented first and foremost by The River House and by all the volunteers and the individuals that work there. My oldest son keeps The River House as a favorite place to bring his girlfriend. My teen sons bring their kayaks down the river in the summertime, and they always stop and they take a break at The River House because they have a pull-off. And they come up and they drink sodas, and then they get back on the river and they head further downstream. My children have made The River House part of our family tradition. It is something that, it's the first idea that pops into their head every weekend. It's something they want to do whenever there's an availability, and it has made them most definitely more involved in our community, and my wife and I, by extension. When people ask me why I love my town so much, the conversation inevitably turns to me asking them if they've ever come to The River House. Because if they did, they would understand not just the beauty of Cape and Bridge, but West Virginia as a whole. I believe that The River House is West Virginia writ small. It is welcoming. It is eclectic. It is full of joyful and very happy people who are intent on the building up of community. And it is, I'm not to overstate it, it's the best thing about my town. As an aside, my children ask for River House hats and hoodies for their birthdays, which we provide. Eventually, they bought me a hat. I was in Winchester at a restaurant. A gentleman walked up to me and said, oh, have you ever been there? Oh, I love Oh, I love that place, it's so great." So, it's, it's an, it's an ambassador. There are ambassadors for, for, again, not just Cape and Bridge, but West Virginia as a whole. And I just, I wanted to communicate the extreme value that they add to us, and I hope that that helps you understand a little bit more about why we value it as highly as we do.
So, the reason that I think that the River House is a good creative addition to the community is because before the River House was here, there was nothing really for the youth to get involved in. Like, there was no events, no, it just felt dull. Like, there was not very many things to do, and especially for teenagers on the weekends, as my dad said, to, like, go to concerts and other things like workshops. And especially with there being, like, other communities that have other creative things, like, there's The Farmer's Daughter, and The Cat and the Fiddle, and Bent River, especially because with the music opportunities, like, this is my third scholarship for the Music Makers event, which is created by the River House. And afterwards, we're actually going to a jam there. Like, things like the Open Mic Night and the jams really allow, like, they're welcoming, and the River House is a great way to meet people, and it's a really nice atmosphere, I think, to communicate with people and to fellowship.
What instrument do you play?
The fiddle.
Fiddle.
When are you going to be playing it again, while we could hear?
When will you be, when will you be playing concerts? They get an all-time jam at the River House?
Yeah, probably.
Work on our schedule? The all-time jam is open every week. I didn't introduce you.
I can introduce myself. Thank you for your service to this great state. My name is Julie Farrar, and I'm a fairly recent resident of West Virginia, and I'm an artist. My husband is a psychologist, and we chose to retire to West Virginia. And I believe that that's a big, a positive move on our part, because it enabled us to, we were in Washington DC, both working intensely. And as an artist, I really didn't have the space or the time to do the work I needed to do. And we came out to West Virginia and were both really moved by the idea of doing something with healing and the arts. They work really well together, and if you do get a chance to read through some of the material from the World Health Organization, you'll see that the arts has an immense impact on people feeling connected and secure. My husband does a lot of work with veterans who suffer from PTSD, and we've run workshops together where I do the artwork and he does talking therapy. And it's made a really big impact, and, and we see it not just with veterans, but with children, adolescents. And West Virginia seems like a, a good place for that to be happening. When we first got to Cape and Bridge, we saw this little shack that some people seemed to be doing some work on, had no idea what it was, and within the, the same first year that we moved, we saw it blossom into this incredible community happening. Welcoming, sort of a magnet for people to get excited about the arts. There are arts for all classes, so anybody can participate, music, but also just the coming together, the community. And as an artist, it was really important to me to have that connection. And through that connection, I've rented a studio right on School Street. It's a fabulous building, and I've run classes out of there, I do my own artwork. Just recently was invited into an exhibition in Wheeling, and went to that reception, and I guess in a way, I ended up being somewhat of an ambassador for the arts from Cape and Bridge to, you know, expanding out. That exhibition is, includes artists from 23 states. So, all those little things that we do, you know, not really thinking about what impact they have, in a small community, it reverberates. And I can't emphasize enough how much the River House has been that little pebble that dropped into the water and just sent out those ripples, and continues to do so, and impacts on, in ways that, you know, when you first think of the arts, maybe your experience with the arts is not very extensive. It's really important to realize that it permeates every part of our lives, not just looking at a pretty picture, but also the creative process, making that picture, and the, the connection that people make with their inner selves. So, I'm really grateful to the River House for making that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Just wanted to wrap up and, and thank our guests. These are just a couple people who are enriching Hampshire County, but are choosing to stay and to come and to contribute, and the arts are kind of a magnet for that.
Yep. Thank you, thank you for your testaments on how much you like our county.
Thank you so much. And I just wondered, is it possible for us to get a picture with you? Is that too disruptive, kind of to prove that we were here? Do you prefer not?
Sure.
Mr. President? Sure, we can, we can do a picture. We got to do it quick. We're running behind, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
I want you to.
Mr. President?
Get the picture off me.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, I appreciate you indulging us. Thank you.
Something out of that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Ah, that's good news.
Did want to say that there is a large majority of people that, that move here, and it seems that their intent is to come here, move away from a place that they didn't like, move here to a place that they do like, and immediately try to change our politics and change our way of life. So, it's kind of refreshing to have people like the Reese's, who you said, you know, you've, you sit down, you have these events and politics, and religion's not even really a topic. You've came here, and I can truly say, you've made an amazing difference in the town. Thank you.
Okay. Next, on the agenda is the public hearing for August Frank Benson probate in solemn form.
Do you want me to address that?
Yes, Clark, if you would start off.
There's two ways for people presenting a will when someone passes away. First is called ex parte, which is the will brought in, I review it, and attached order judging that it's, it's a valid will. The second is called probate in solemn form, which means there's some complexity involved typically, and so that the will is, a public hearing is, is held. All parties are notified. That's why we're having a public hearing. Seamen requested that we have this probate in solemn form hearing on the entering of this particular will of Mr. Benson. So, there he's in chairman, his attorney brought it, so I'll let him be out late. We don't do this very often.
I understand. Neither do I. Well, good evening. It's good to be in front of all three of you. It's been a while since I've been in front of the county commission.
Don't tell a lie when you come up first thing.
So, as Clerk Stright was, was indicating to you, this is one of the means by which a will and testament can be probated. And what we have here is August Frank Benson Jr., who departed this life on August the 7th of 2022. He was a resident of Hampshire County, West Virginia. He had, on the ninth day of February 2017, went to the law offices of V. Allen Riley at that time, and had, had a will prepared that stated his long expressed intent, which was, in the event of the death of his wife, that all of his estate would go to his grandson. I would say, seven years prior to that, he executed a bill of sale concerning all of his firearms and guns, where he left all those firearms and guns to his grandson, a gentleman sitting to my immediate right. And I'll, I'll tie that in here in a little bit, but, so, in, in that will, he also left his children, several of them, one, two, three, four, five children, one of which was Pamela Benson, his mother, the sum of $1 each, and that was it. Anyway, subsequent to 2017, Mr. Benson developed, unfortunately, Alzheimer's and dementia. And as a result of that, he was becoming progressively more worse, the, the condition was progressive, and it became worse over a period of time. Pulling information and belief, in 2019, he lost his West Virginia motor vehicle driver's license by, as a result of an automobile accident that he was involved in. And I would tell the county commission that we have filed in the Circuit Court of Hampshire County, West Virginia, also a complaint contesting the will. So, but let me tie this in real quick here. So, regarding Mr. Benson's condition, he was having problems wandering all from his house. He was returned back to his home on multiple occasions by individuals that knew him in the community. He was wandering, found wandering, and basically had no idea where he was. In March of 2020, my client's mother, Pamela Benson, and Edward Benson, his uncle, went to the law offices of Jonathan Brill to once again have another last will and testament drawn up. And that will was completely contrary to the previous will, and did not follow the long expressed stated intent that was set forth in the initial will, nor did it express the long stated intent that was set forth in the bill of sale seven years prior to that. In that will, everything was left to his mother and his uncle, of which each only received $1 each in the prior stated will. We have interviewed the entire family involved in this. It's my understanding that everybody supports our client's petition, with the exception of his mother, who's represented by Mr. Vance here this evening. And that's the entire family. Even Mr. Edward Benson, who was the benefactor of the subsequent will. It's our position that the medical records, in this case, probably will hinge upon the medical records, the treating neurologists at Winchester, we're not sure exactly who it is, we'll have to find that out, and, and determine, get those medical records and see to what extent, how much the dementia and Alzheimer's was affecting the mental well-being and mental state of Mr. August Benson, the decedent. That's really the key, to determine to what extent he actually possessed adequate mental capacity and was lucid enough to make a, an informed, reasonably formed decision, or whether the will was a product of coercion, duress, and basically fraud.
So, none of this has been investigated yet, as far as his condition, as far as the dementia and Alzheimer's, as far as really knowing whether that would have had an impact on the will?
Well, it, it has been investigated. There's, there was postings made on the obituary for this individual, and there were things, there were things that were posted on there about his mental condition and well-being, and that it recognized that he had sufficient, had substantial deficiencies. But as far as the medical records, we don't have the power of subpoena until we file a lawsuit, which we did contemporaneously with the filing of this petition with your honors, the county commission, to contest the will. And we will be asking for discovery in the, in the, in the case in front of the Circuit Court of Hampshire County, West Virginia, at which time we'll have the power of subpoena, and we'll be able to get those medical records and see specifically in detail what they, what they say. So, yeah. So, that, we were asking the county commission to do one of a few things. Refuse the subsequent will, prepare the duress, coercion, and also the incompetency of the decedent, and recognize the previous will that was prepared by Mr. Riley in 2017, three years earlier, that predates the dementia and Alzheimer's and the overall condition of a decedent, which also expresses the, the, also sets forth the longstanding expressed intent of August Benson, which the entire family would admit was to leave everything in the death of his wife, and she did, she was deceased, to his grandson, my client. We're asking that the county commission admit to probate the initial will prepared by Mr. Riley, that the county commission refuse the subsequent will prepared by Mr. Brill, and also that, it depends on what the court decides to do, but that the court also stay the ability of any individual to attempt to probate the will by intestate succession in the event that they were to say that a will did not exist, but here we have two wills. That's, that's our position on this, and I think that's pretty much said it all.
So, you, you've already filed with the circuit court?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I understand that Mr. Vance, I think you've already, have you filed with the circuit court also?
No, we're with, we still have 20, we still have, we're within our 20 days to answer right now. She got served on the 16th, so we, we've got a couple, we've got a week and a half to.
But he did, he did bring in objections.
But I did file an objection with your, your gentleman.
Yes, that's, that's what I was referring to.
I have not filed anything with the circuit court yet, with the circuit, yes, circuit court, yes. I have not been presented with an original will, which is the requirement for a clerk to receive a will in either of these cases. So, contests of wills are, my understanding, resolved in front of the circuit court anyway, and my recommendation that you refer that over there.
And that's, that's, that's my personal opinion, because I don't, I don't feel that we're, really, from, from what I've heard, I'm not sure that we're qualified to, to do this. I, that's just my opinion. The other, the other two guys, I
to receive a will in either of these cases. So contests of wills are, my understanding, resolved in front of the circuit court anyway, and my recommendation that you refer that over there.
And that's my personal opinion, because I don't feel that we're, really, from what I've heard, I'm not sure that we're qualified to do this. That's just my opinion. The other two guys, I had to think about this too, but it's both, you know, we've dealt with wills before, and we've dealt with incompetent executors, and we've handled all that, but I believe this is the first time we've had two wills of this nature, I believe. So that's my opinion.
And I will say, the reason that we brought this in both the county court and then the circuit court is that it's a unique circumstance, I don't know if Mr. Vance would agree, but it's a unique circumstance in the laws of the state of West Virginia where you actually, I think, have to file in both courts. Very unique. And I would have to say, my 30-plus years of practicing law was the first time I've ever had to file in both the county court and the circuit court.
I understand.
And you can probate a will, a copy of a status copy of a will in solemn form, but there's more issues than just that here.
Correct, but it's part of why we have a hearing, and I think we have the right to do that.
Sure.
Say the original will was 2017?
Correct.
And he died in 2020. He died in, pardon?
He died in August 22.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, August 2022. She died, his wife died in 2020, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm fine with referring this to judicial circuit, Mr. President.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
Mr. Hott?
Commissioner Cannon, or?
Go ahead.
Did you move to?
No, I didn't.
Well, I'll move then, that we, that we.
I'll second Commissioner Hott's motion.
I'll second, circuit court.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we will refer the August Frank Benson probate in solemn form to the circuit court. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Pardon me?
I said I didn't really get to say anything, but you guys behind, so I won't.
Okay.
So I'll let you get to your meeting.
Did you need to say something?
No, no, I don't think so.
Well, I seen, I read your, I read this.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I was gonna say.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
See you guys.
Okay, next we have Rebecca Miller, Hampshire County prosecuting attorney, and this is about personnel.
It is, and commissioners, I'm gonna be quick, there was a murder earlier today, and apparently that's why I had to leave the room.
I didn't hear you.
There was a murder earlier today in the city, and they need my assistant, so I'm gonna make this very quick.
Okay.
You sent us a letter.
I did send a letter upon the request, so I do have a letter that stated February 24th, it would have been Friday, and I sent to the commission regarding the hiring of a legal assistant and a paralegal. So I originally was asking for a second assistant prosecuting attorney. We've not had any applicants or any success, so I think it kind of, with all the criminal matters that we have and the workload that we have right now, the best way that I know how to reorganize my office is to do a third support staff. So what I'm asking is the $70,000 that's been in my budget for the year, I'm not asking for any additional money, I'm just asking that that be reallocated to allow raises as listed in the letter dated February 24th, given the excellent work they have done to manage things, but it is getting overwhelming for our whole entire office to manage and keep up with it, and that I can use the additional monies to hire a legal assistant slash paralegal position. It's already been advertised, but that was because my legal assistant had found another job that was substantial pay. She's since then rescinded that position and has stood a stay on at my office, which is beneficial. She's finally trained and able to take on a lot more to help us out, but I'm just asking that you honor my letter and the raises that I gave my staff, and that allow me to hire a third support staff, which would be a legal assistant slash paralegal.
So you want to hire a paralegal, is that correct?
Correct, I'm not asking for any additional money, I just want to use my budget that I already have, that I've allocated and kept it.
Mr. President, I move, we go ahead and authorize the prosecutor to hire, you already advertised, correct?
I did, yes.
To consent to us, her hiring a paralegal, and making the necessary salary adjustments that she so indicated in her letter?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we allow the adjustments, and, well, not adjustments, we allow the difference in hiring, and that prosecutor Miller has presented for her office concerning a paralegal. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed.
Thank you, commissioners, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Clerk Strike, do we have anything that could, any maintenance items, it takes about five minutes?
You may be aware that our audit is going on, our other side of the auditor is here for the state auditor's office. Part of that process is to sign a letter regarding the objective, and so I have a letter to be signed here, five pages, and we're gonna talk.
And that's the normal audit we do every year?
Yes.
And we just need the president's signature on that?
Yes, we do.
Mr. President, I move, we authorize you to sign the auditor's contract for the audit. What's the year, 2020?
2023.
2023?
We're, you're, 22, I'm sorry, year ended 22.
Okay. 2022?
2023.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission president signed the auditor's letter for year ending 2022. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
I have two letters that I received, one of them in regard to animal control facility, and you recall sometime back, the commission asked, with concerns regarding the physical properties of the complex, to address a letter to me that I would give to you. And in this case, this recently pointed out several things, and please refer our attention around the animal shelter, and I just want to suggest that we, suggest that you ask Matt Hott, our project manager, to look into those things and review them, and try and get back to you as far as what they think fixes my case. She identifies her concerns, it's a list of things that are going on with the building, and the dog runs and things like that, but I think it's, I mentioned it to Matt, and you seem to be agree with him to it as well. The other thing is, you're aware of the Pin Oak Fountain? The caretakers of the Pin Oak Fountain have some concerns, and several of us have talked about it, and we really don't know what to do about it, but here again is something that I think maybe Matt could look at, and get some ideas on.
Yeah, I did take a look at that, Mr. Clerk. It has a large cavity in the top of it that they filled with hydraulic cement, but water's infiltrating, and the crystals are starting to fall away from the mortar, it looks like a.
It's a very unique structure that was kind of artistically created in probably the 30s, and.
Local crystals, is it historic landmarks, did they, are they aware?
I don't know about that.
Well, we normally give them, we always give them, I think it's 1,200, 1,200 a year for that monument there. And we also had some problems with flooding out there, and we had to get the state road out there, I think, to open up some ditches.
Yeah, that was before I took office.
Been that long?
So you think that'd be something that Matt could take a look at, maybe get some guidance or feedback on?
I would be in favor, I would move that we authorize Mr. Hott to investigate the Pin Oak Fountain. Mr. President, do you want a separate motion?
Yeah. Yeah, let's do both, let's do one and then do the other one after that. So we are currently, there's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Cannon concerning the Bloomery Fountain, not Bloomery, the Pin Oak Fountain, I'm sorry, Pin Oak Fountain. I hear a second on that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we work with our county person, Matthew Hott, to investigate what it might take or not take to fix the fountain. Now concerning the letter from the animal control.
Yeah, I believe we authorize Matthew to look at that also with our maintenance people, Mr. McBride, and I do know that they have a, they do have some problems with animals digging under the fence, so I think we're gonna have to, you know, get that corrected. So that's my motion, we authorize Mr. Hott to look at that, along with Mr. McBride.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we also send the county out to investigate the possibilities and of the repairs to the animal control building. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed. Okay, we are back on schedule now, and we will ask Mr. Brian Malcolm, HCSA, HSEM Director, for the EPMG grant acceptance and new employee introduction.
Good evening, commissioners. The grant acceptance is the emergency management preparedness grant, and I wish the West Virginia Department of Homeland Security was as far up as the auditor's office, but this is for 2022. This is the acceptance letter of the award of $54,339. It is the emergency management preparedness grant. It is the one that we were able to get for having, planning, emergency management and all that. If you all approve it, I would need Commissioner, President, signature in blue ink, right there.
Also, part of your salary is paid out of that, correct?
Yes, half of my salary and half of the deputy director's salary is out of that. And it ranges, depending on how much money each year the FEMA gives them, it's been as high as 80-some thousand dollars and as low as 40-some thousand.
Yeah, this is normally, we do this every year, so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I move, we authorize you to sign the EPMG grant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission president signed the EPMG grant presented by Mr. Malcolm. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
If I can have that back, I'll make sure it gets sent to Charleston.
What was the amount?
Pardon?
That was the amount on that?
54.
54, 339. Thank you. Now, the other issue, one of the other discussions I want to have is tonight, I, the HCSA, and with your all's permission, advertised for administrative assistant to replace Jeanette Seville. We received five total applications, three of which were on time by the deadline set by the board, and two were not. We interviewed three of the applicants that come on time, that were met the deadlines and met the qualifications. Three very nice people, very qualified. And the HCSA board, first of all, and back up, myself, HCSA board, Mr. Kimball, Steve Kimball, and Sheriff Sines assisted in the interview process. And after going through and scoring everything, we chose a lady that we would like to offer the position to, if you also approve. I don't know how far you want to discuss this, sir, but the lady we offered the position, would like to offer the position to is Catherine Sines from Purgitville, Middle Ridge Road, the Hampshire-Mineral County line. She is not here tonight. I did not require her to be here because, after talking to Clerk Strike, he said it's not necessary, so.
Okay, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Malcolm regarding the hiring?
No, I was at the meeting, of course, I didn't have a vote, but I, the board recommended and approved the suggestion, or the recommendation of the committee. So therefore, I'll move that we authorized Mr. Malcolm to go ahead and hire Mrs. Sines.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the hiring of Mrs. Sines for the position advertised by HCSA. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
My next dilemma I want to bring up to you all, and ask for your recommendation or guidance, is, I'm sure you're aware by now, Mrs. Timbrook is no longer staying with the state, or with the county, she has accepted a position with another state agency and is moving on. That position was started in 2016, and I approached this group asking for a grants administrator, and they so graciously, you all approved it, and we've had her since then. Well, the dynamics of her job has changed quite a bit, too. She has picked up a lot of extra work. She was hired as grants administrator and assistant director. Now that we're running 22 people under emergency management and emergency services, which I was the director of, and she was deputy director, I need guidance as to what you all would like to do. My preference would be to hire another director, deputy director or assistant director. I have not worked on a job description, I have some ideas, but I've not worked on job description because I felt it was not necessary if you all did not approve that position, and as to what you all were gonna do with the grants administrator. So I'm open for questions and discussion on this one.
Well, we definitely need a grants administrator, we know that much. Aaron was, really helped us change a lot of things in the county here in the last couple of years, so we definitely have to, in some way, shape, or form, fill that, refill that position, but I'll.
Well, I have the job description for that one that I can share with you all.
Mr. President, I, and I think maybe we've all have maybe have the same idea, but I think at the time, that grant writing position was put up there with Mr. Malcolm's office. However, I think in, as the future comes on, I think we ought to maybe have control with the grant writer, the county commission ought to have their own control with the grant writer, and maybe let Mr. Malcolm advertise for his deputy director, but I think, I think we should, not tonight, but maybe on discuss, having a grant writer that would come under the county commission, and maybe even combine that with another, maybe a human resources or, because we, we're getting to the point where we do, we definitely need a grant writer. I mean, Aaron's done a great job for us, and we definitely need that, but I feel that they should come under the control of the county commission more so than one of our other department is.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I'm not against Ted having a deputy director at all, but I definitely think that the grant writer position has became more and more utilized, just this year, taking on helping the development authority, and then Darren Taylor from the criminal justice board asked to borrow her, and that's really become a full-time role. And also, I think if I'm correct, that, you know, there was a split in how the salary was paid, which, you know, I don't think we should necessarily do it that way if we, but not, we need to talk more about that, and maybe a matter for executive session in another meeting. But yeah, I agree with Commissioner Hott, Mr. President.
So, Mr. President, I move, we authorize Mr. Malcolm to go ahead and advertise for a deputy director in his office.
Second.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Malcolm? You like that motion?
I like that motion, sir, and I just want you to know that-
Don't make any of that way later, no.
The purpose of the EM, or the grant writer was because when I first come to office, I was very new to it, and actually, it showed out to be a very profitable proof of concept for the county, and I used the, being able to get half of her salary back by writing the grants for my office as a purpose. We have grown beyond my office. The grant management for this county has grown beyond what, so I believe you guys are a hundred percent on track with that, and I have no qualms at all, no issues, so I'm tickled.
The reason I interrupted there is because I saw Mr. Malcolm wanted to speak there while the motion was being made, so-
Know that I wasn't hurting or bothered by.
With the motion on the floor for the allowing Mr. Malcolm to advertise for a Deputy Director, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passed.
Uh, if I may. Normally, it's good times shut up, I understand, you get what you want, I just want to give you a little direction of what my thought process is. I'll draw up job description, take it to the HCSA Board, Emergency Services Board, and because they're part of the Emergency Management side, and have them go over it, and then bring it back to you all for final approval before it goes into paper, if that's okay with you all. Does it sound proper?
That suits me.
All right, because I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, on the agenda, we have the Ambulance Ordinance Amendment Schedule. I've been working with Attorney Gay and the Sheriff's Office and the Treasurer's Office on the amending the ambulance ordinance, and basically, what the amendment does was just, we took out some definitions that we thought weren't necessary, and also, we defined camp lot owners and how they pay their fees. We were more specific in defining that, and at this time, I'd like to move that we have the clerk advertise a public hearing for the ambulance ordinance in the paper. We only have to advertise it one time, and have him do that, and then, so we can have a public hearing and pass the amendment and have it completed by April. And I'm gonna have Mr. Cox put it on the website, the amended version, and it's really no, the only thing that was really changed was the camp lots more than anything else. I mean, we had some loopholes in there as far as how they pay their fee, and the camp lot owners, those people, they only have to pay for six months anyway, but that was mainly what we've done, and I'd like to go ahead and get that, authorize the clerk to go ahead and advertise for that public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Hampshire County Commission allow Clerk Strite to advertise for a hearing in which the ambulance ordinance, some definitions would be removed and some more specific language for camp lots would be added. So all in favor of that motion to have that hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And that was under the maintenance items of the agenda there, folks, if you were following along and couldn't find it. Eric, do you have anything, quick and simple, it'll take three or four minutes?
Just a couple of gifts, exoneration, so request to use the courthouse steps, April twenty-ninth, five, April twenty-ninth, around ten a.m., with children's flag day, move former families honoring children that have been lost to child abuse and neglect, that is an example thing. You recall those tables, you see those wheels, those little white wheels around town, that's the same group, so it's the Eastern Regional Family Resource Network. That's the, well, the one I sent you, and you can fly, or if those would like to have that.
Did he say this? He said-
Exonations.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the exoneration as presented by the tax assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the exonerations presented by our tax assessor since our last meeting be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And then, in regards to what Clerk Strite presented there for the-
Use of the front of the courthouse on the twenty-ninth.
I move we approve that.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we allow for use of the courthouse on the twenty-ninth, and what was the name of that organization again?
Eastern Regional Family Resource Network.
And that's just the front steps, right?
And flag, yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, now, we move down to our last item on the top of the agenda, and that is citizens' concerns regarding the new elementary schools.
Mr. Morgan, how you doing?
So-
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely.
So I will start with just a little history here. Go ahead and have a seat there, gentlemen. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
But I'll start with a little history for the last couple of weeks, considering the Commissioners. Last several weeks, or two weeks, the Commission has received multiple questions, concerns about the new school building projects. I believe it to be the recent naming of the schools sparking the concerns, however, I think that, again, sparked up more questions to follow. And the Commission has agreed with the intensity of the concerns, that it did warrant a spot on the Commission agenda for discussion, even though it is primarily school board business. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna recite the concerns that I've received, and then, you know, allow the Commission to seek appropriate action on what we feel we should do or not do. So first, I'm just, I'm gonna recite some of the concerns. I don't expect a answer directly after those concerns, but I want the public to hear what those concerns are. And I've attempted to summarize those the best I can, hit the major highlights, because there is, you know, several different ways to ask one question, and I want to try to be fair to both the school board and the citizens showing concern for the school board's current operations on the schools. So just let me go over those. One of the big concerns we've heard, and I will also let the other two Commissioners speak when I'm done, to make sure they correct anything I might misspeak or they disagree with, but anyway, first one is, why weren't the parents, taxpayers and voters not allowed to be more involved and have their voices heard in selecting a name for the schools? Another concern, why, or was there a guideline or process to follow in selecting a name for each school? And if so, what was it? And if not, why not? Who exactly made the final official decision to recommend the names of the schools to the Board for approval? Why weren't some hearings held to allow for public input on several different sensitive subjects pertaining to the schools and their image in our community? Will there be any type of mitigation for the loss of the park in Slainsville, which included ball fields and walking park? That was widely used by local youth sport teams and citizens, and a community effort by way of donations. How will Slainsville School be supplied with water? Will the well be considered for treatment, updating and become usable again for backup should the PSD not make it there? And finally, and in my opinion only, folks, it's said that our nation has come to this, and that this question has to be asked, but will the taxpayer dollars be used in construction that builds bathroom facilities that entertain or recognize those claiming to be transgenders? So that's a summary of the concerns I've heard, and we are hearing a portion of our voters out there saying that if they had known how some of these things were to be handled, they would have never voted yes on the school bond, and it scares them on future funding requests. And I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Hock and Commissioner Cannon in just a second, but usually, I'm not too long-winded, but I need to explain a few things here. I need to explain the relationship between the Commission and the Board of Education in our county. In the past, I've, on past-related concerns, there's, there is somewhat of a misunderstanding among folks on what that, you know, relationship is, so I need to clearly state what the Commissioners' role was when it comes to the recent school bond. And in the recent school bond, there was only two main roles. The first one is, we're responsible for voting to approve or disapprove the bond to go on the ballot. For example, was the Board of Education presenting to us an acceptable and legal for Hampshire County to vote on? Obviously, we said yes, and voting unanimously to allow that to go on the ballot.
With the exception of me, Mr. President, who wasn't elected at that time, the previous Commission.
Yeah.
Let's be clear.
It was unanimously vote, I didn't say who it was. Two, is we were responsible in conjunction with the Sheriff acting as Treasurer to collect those monies from the bond that passes and give it to the school board. So with those two things being said, we basically don't interfere with their day-to-day decisions. You know, that's what your elected school board members are for. So some might say, and I've already heard this, you know, what business is this, all this to the County Commission? Well, just my take on it is, you know, first, I do reference people who approach me with school-related concerns on anything to the Board of Education, as that's what they're elected to do. But as the Board of Commissioners here have been approached by citizens in this way, we do have the responsibility to communicate with the school board and ask for some accountability on these concerns. And I do feel they owe that to the Commission as the local governing body in the county, and as the governing body tasked with putting their proposals on the ballot and collecting not only the funds for the school bond, but also the task with collecting all the taxes of the county, and then giving seventy percent of that to the schools, and additional funds that go to the schools out of the county's remaining thirty percent of our regular budget. So I'll let the other two Commissioners speak, and if I missed anything, Commissioners, or if I misspoke, and, or in your opinion, if you disagreed with any of those statements that I'm reporting on, that we've gathered from the citizens, please do that. Commissioner Hock?
Okay, I, well, first of all, I, as far as the naming of the schools, I was definitely against how that was handled, and of course, I'm also, I'll tell you, I'm biased about that, because I went to Augusta Grade School, I started there in nineteen forty-nine, I'm not, I'm not the oldest one in here, but I, but I did, that was my school, and I just, that bothers me, that the taxpayers, the parents and taxpayers didn't have more of a say in it. I think maybe you picked a committee to handle that, and so, so I'm very, I'm against that, and I'm not sure anything can be changed, but I just want you to know that I'm against that, and I have been from the start. I think, I think Mrs. Barnes, no, she wasn't at a real time meeting, but we talked, I talked about with Jeff at a real time meeting, and I was adamant about him changing the name. And I'm sure the people in Slainsville are, too, but in Romney, of all three names that I've heard, Romney probably makes more, the one they done in South Branch makes more sense than any of them, but that's just, that's just my opinion. The other thing that I heard, and I'm totally against this, but then, I'm not sure it's a fact, I heard about the transgender bathrooms, but I don't think that's, I called a board member, and he told me that that's not the case, that it's, that one of the bathrooms is for staff, and it's a unisex where a man could go in and lock the door, and then come out, and then a woman could go in, and, or the kids, if they requested, could use that bathroom, but there'd only be one in there at a time, and the rest of the bathrooms are like they are now, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a map to show the Commissioners of the two schools that have already gone out to bid. It's clearly stated, there is, you know, dual occupancy, there's, you know, multi-facilities in the boys' and the girls' bathrooms, there is several single occupancy bathrooms, there be it a staff bathroom, and just the location of these bathrooms, it just makes sense. We have some in the third, third and fourth grade wing, we have one bathroom pointed this direction, and this one on the other, you know, in case we do have a male and a female teacher, you know, it just, it's, teachers do a better job when they're inside the classrooms than at the restroom. I just find it just disheartening that, you know, people would even entertain that we would, you know, consider transgender bathrooms within an elementary school. We've got a lot better things to do than worry about bathrooms, we got education to do. So, now, if, you know, you're all more than happy to have, to look at these, you know, it is single occupancy, just as I might note what's right out here in the hallway, that's all it is. And there's no kitty boxes, no kitty litter boxes, I've heard that rumor, you know, as well, and I almost think that those two just about go hand in hand with the ridiculousness of it.
Commissioner Cannon, did you have comments?
I mean, more than anything, I didn't want to pass judgment before I gave the gentleman a chance to address the questions, because a lot of my, I didn't allow myself to start forming opinions before I had heard from the gentleman, but it's easy to do on a fiery topic like this, and then I found myself doing that, so I'm glad you guys came in. You know, as the public knows, you know, this Commission and the Sheriff's Office have given a lot to the schools, and it's a relationship of reciprocity, and I think we all, I don't want this to seem adversarial, but, you know, we do have a, I have a duty to these two Commissioners to prove I'm not neglecting my duty, and the rest of the county officers have a duty in the code to, when in question, prove that they're not neglecting their duty and not incompetent, and I think that's the main basis for me, you know, taking part in requesting this meeting, and the big questions Commissioner Eglinger touched on, I mean, but for the record, I don't have a problem with anybody having their own sexual preference, I think the parents should have them say over their children, and whatever your sexual preference may be, is your prerogative, but I don't think that this Commission or these taxpayers should be subsidized- these taxpayers should be subsidizing that in any regard, and that was my biggest concern. So I don't want to condemn you before you even explain anything. So I appreciate y'all coming.
You gave up the question.
You know, guys, one of the things that I, and this don't necessarily have to do with what we're doing here tonight, but, and I want everybody to think about this, we are slowly losing local control over everything.
Absolutely.
I mean, we, that's why the Board of Education is, is, has a problem now, and that's why the, the state Board of Education, and then the state, the state government, the legislatures, they, they gradually take a little bit, and the federal government, they gradually take a little bit at a time. And the next damn thing you know, we, we won't have any local government, we won't have any local Board of Education, it'll all be federal or state, and, and we won't have any say at all. And we have all got to stand up and, and challenge this stuff, and, and we have to, we can't do it after the fact. You know, dag on, we, we've got, we've got to stand up, and we've got to stand up in numbers and say, we don't, we don't want this. We don't want you telling us how to run our darned schools. And because it, it comes down, the sheriff and I have talked time and time again, and I've talked all, it, it comes down to the dollar. Dag on, and, and here we are, a lot of times selling our soul for, for money, and I ain't gonna sell my soul for money, you know, and we, we have got, and we've, we've got to do it in a, in a, in a good way. We can't be radical about this thing, but we, we just, we lose, we're losing control. And the people that's in here tonight talking about why they came to Hampshire County, well, I know how good Hampshire County is. You know, I, I, I know how darned good it is, and, and, and the people, you know, the, the people in these communities, the Sowers, the, the Hots, the, all these people are a community, and, and, and we're like-thinking about a lot of stuff, you know, and we're very like-thinking about the gender thing. And so we, that's how we have to do this somehow, and I don't know how, how to organize all that, but we have got to do, stand up and, and say, we're, we're tired of this. You know, we're tired of you telling us what to do, how to do it, and when to do it, because that's basically what happens.
Right.
And, and, you know, I'm getting older, and, and I won't say a lot of stuff, but it, it bothers me, and it also bothers me that it's, it's hard to get good people to serve in, in, in these positions, all of them, because the way it is now, there's, there's some much-earned controversy and, and bickering and division that, that good people don't want to do it. But we, somebody has to sacrifice, we have to, we have to keep doing that. We, we have to think there's better, there, there's more good people in this world than there are bad. We've, we've got to keep that faith that there is.
I absolutely agree, Commissioner.
But I don't, a lot of these things, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to get them corrected.
I think though that...
I know where we're going, and I know the other thing that I preach on all the time is family, family foundations, family structure. We've lost it, guys, we've lost it, and I don't know whether we're ever gonna get it back. Anyway.
You know, that's an issue me and Ed see a lot in the board with student hearings, with expulsions. You'll have the kid come in, and you're like, well, why'd you do this? And it's, well, I did, I did away with it at home, but then the mom comes in, well, no, he doesn't.
See, we, we've got to get control of the school.
Gotta believe the kid, because he obviously has done this before countless and countless of times, and it starts at home, it does, and I was crucified for saying it in the review one time by the parents, and then that same article, the principal said it starts at school, and he was crucified, so no one wants to take the blame for how things are going.
We've got to get control, we, we've got to get control back. How we're gonna do that, I don't know, guys, but we, we got to do it, because we're not running the schools, you know?
First and foremost was, for me, as one commissioner, was the bathrooms, but the other thing was the sewage field, and gentlemen, we talked about that. Would you mind touching on that question?
Absolutely, and that will actually lay into one of the concerns, Commissioner Eglinger, that you had brought up about the, the facilities there at Slainsville. Originally, on the, the first set of plans, there was a drafted to be a wastewater treatment plant, it would be to the left-hand side of the existing wastewater treatment plant, and that the soccer, or the softball field down there would be the site of the leach field. After some extensive talking, and, and just re-looking back at the situation, working with Derek Hagerty of the Health Department, Gary's excavating, we have actually come up with a much better, a much less expensive, and a much more environmentally responsible situation. We will now have a conventional leach field up there beside the, beside the playground, the existed, the old play, the existing playground now, and that'll be up there, and it'll, I believe it'll be fourteen one-hundred-foot lines, and in that spot, there's more than enough room for a reserve field as well. We'll have a four-thousand and a two-thousand gallon tank, just the same as what you'd find within your household. No, no discharge it upon, into the creek, you know, we won't have students playing on top of it, and that in turn saves the softball field and some more of the walking trail. It was very much unfortunate that the soccer field was a casualty. Where else are we gonna put a school? You know, we had, we had that ground. Yes, that was absolute and wonderful asset to the community, but it, it was a tough decision, it wasn't made lightly. What are you supposed to do? We cannot afford, I'm sure you'd agree, Commissioner Haught, we can't afford to go out there and buy another seventeen acres to be able to locate a school.
But you know, as we talked earlier, how many people out here voted for the, voted for the, for the bond to start? And I imagine all of them probably did, and I did, I voted for it. Now, I wouldn't vote for it, and, and I don't think the people in Slainsville realized that we was, they was gonna take that soccer field, you know, when they passed the bond, if they had, because these, I see the people back there that worked on that, you know, the people, Walt Davis, Walt's not here anymore, but Dave, those guys spent a lot of time on that field, and, and, and if they knew you was gonna, I ain't saying you, but they knew they was gonna take the soccer field, they, they wouldn't have voted for this bond.
I understand that, and, and might I, and this is just a food for thought, that it was originally part of the CEFP plan, you know, one of the, the beginning plans was instead of closing five and opening three new schools, it was on the ballot to open, close five and open two schools. So then Slainsville would lose everything. Do, would you rather lose everything and still keep a soccer field, or continue to keep a small-town identity with a school right in the middle of your, of your town? That's one of the tough decisions that had to be made. Myself personally, that decision came before me again, I'd, I'd stick with it. I, I think that, you know, but...
We could say definitively the, the walking track will be restored?
There will be parts of the walking track, because right now, the walking track is, you know, it would go up, wrap up around a school.
It'll probably shift, because where the school's gonna sit, the walking track ran through, so most likely it'll come behind.
And there are some, there's some room for expansion, you know, through the woods as well, it's rough den down there, I don't see why, but providing we have the funds to be able to do it, you know, we could improve those to make it, you know, nice as well.
We got a question back.
Also to talk about the, another thing that you all brought up at Slainsville Site was the water. We, you know, I'm sure you all know, you know, there's water that's coming out there, and there is slated to be a tower, I believe it's behind the old fire hall, which will in, in turn allow us the volume and the pressure to be able to put sprinkler, fire suppression in that building. There will be one of those wells. There's two wells that I know of personally on the Slainsville Site, there will be one well that will have to be closed, because it will be within one-hundred feet of the septic field. But there will be the other one, the, the other one will be still there, you know. Right now, it's slated, you know, just to be as a reserve.
Yeah, because Central Hampshire's already got the project as far as bringing water out there. And then I don't know where the tanks, we've had, and, and that's another thing, it don't have anything to do with you guys, but we, we're having trouble getting right-of-way for the, the people to go out and get the right-of-way signed, we're having trouble from region aid in those places to get, get the paperwork down to them.
Okay.
So they are having problems getting their darned right-of-ways taken care of. But, but Central Hampshire has, as a matter of fact, I think it's fully funded as far as getting the water out there.
And we really appreciate, you know, the ability to be able to put a tank in, that saves, that takes off one of the, you know, the add-ons on the, the school plan, you know, for fire suppression. To, let's see, to go back to the, the names, you know, that is definitely a hot ticket, hot-ticket discussion, I'm sure that you're all's phones are running off the hood, I know ours has, for all hours and days and nights.
Yeah, I didn't like it.
And, and I appreciate that, and that's, that's the beauty of living in America. We all have our opinions, isn't it? Here before you is, if you, if I could entertain, I have a copy of the CEFP that was submitted to Charleston, okay? And if I could, I'd just like to take a, a moment and read the names of the members at large, okay? We had Jody Frye with Jolynn Concrete, Brian and Secan, Secan, yeah, Brian Flanagan, Alex Sowers, Brian Brill, Amanda Giffen, Greg Boer, Travis Delplane, Bob Mayhew, Greg Rinker, Roy Millicent, Aaron Cox, and Myra Kesner were all members at large. And we also had representatives from each school, and these representatives were picked by the principals. Okay, for Hampshire High School, we had Keenan Shanholdz and John Hicks. From Romney Middle, we had G, GT Parsons and Tristan C. Capebridge Elementary, we had Misty and Eli Cook, as well as Dale Myers. Romney Elementary, we had Christina Nichols and Greg Gunther. From Springfield-Greenspring area, we had Joe and Emily Millicent, as well as Tad Malcolm. John Cornwell had Lee Ann Timbrook, Charles and Jessica Mahoney. Slainsville had Jody Stotler and Lindsay McKee, or Lindsay Menelis. And Augusta Elementary had Ashley Sooth, JW Piles. And then the Capebridge Elementary had Julian Buckler and Amy Charlton. Those were all people that were, you know, asked to serve on the CEFP board. There was a, a couple of, one resignation I knew for, for a fact, you know, the, the individual just felt like he wasn't able to give it his due diligence, so he resigned. The people that were school-specific were chose by the principal. The principal had forwarded to Mr. Vaughn's, you know, and the members at large was a, it was during a work session, we came up, and the question was, who would be best, who would be the best to represent each area within the county? And these are the names we came up with. You know, kinda hard to narrow it down from, what, twenty-three thousand people down to thirty, but I think we did our best to, to make a, make a stab at it. And with those, they were, they had discussed the ins and outs, you know, a plan of which direction to take the county with the schools. So, and, so that's what they did, they came up with the original idea was, or the, the end idea was to come up, and instead of doing a high school, we needed to start at the elementaries. The elementaries range from nineteen thirty-four to nineteen fifty-one, I believe. They are antiqu, they were antiquated, and they needed to change, along with our, you know, shrinking population. The CEFP doesn't hold, they don't have, it's not a, a, a meeting that has to go by the Open Meetings Act, or has to abide by Roberts Rules, it's more or less a brainstorming session. We, as the board, you know, pertinent to policy sixty-two hundred from the state, you know, we don't have to reach out to the community to make a lot of these decisions, in which we did, i.e. mainly the names. We could've made those. Gentlemen, would you all want elementary schools that were named, you know, Cumberland Road, Northwestern Pike Elementary, Bloombury Pike Elementary? Because honestly, Augusta Elementary will still stand. Augusta Elementary, that building will be redesignated and will be the central office. Slainsville Elementary is hopefully going to be a childcare, which would be an asset to the area. Romney Elementary will be demolitioned. That, that school is, there's nothing there, you know, that school is beyond repair.
You said Slainsville's gonna be a childcare, we don't know that.
No, and that's, I said, I hope, hopefully, that was the tentative plan.
Because we, we're doing a survey now as to where to put a childcare in the county, so there's, there's nothing, there's nothing says that Slainsville's gonna have the childcare.
Right, I know it had been entertained by, by Eileen Johnson and Ruth Rowan, and a lot of people, had a lot of conversation, you know, but, and the school system's more than willing to work with anyone to be able to, to bring that asset to the community. The methodology for the, the principals to come up with a name, you know, that was, the superintendent was given a directive, it was time, you know, the architects had reached out and said, hey, I need some, I need some specifics on what to make these schools look like. I need to be able to order some metal, you know, we're, we're placing orders, we're reopening bids in seven days. It's time that we need to have some decisions made. So the principals got together. Could the methodology been better? Absolutely. Could it have been more uniform? Yes. But I'm sure is, you know, I know, I'm not gonna say that it was a mistake that we've done, but it, it could've definitely been better, I'm sure that you gentlemen had done things the same. It's like hindsight's twenty-twenty. But one thing that I can say, and when I leave here, I'll feel just strongly about it, we had student involvement. Our kids made those decisions. In fact, at Slainsville Elementary School, the vast majority, when the, after speaking with the principal, the vast majority of the students, when they chose to vote, there was three names to vote for. Crossroads Elementary, home of the Bears, was the, the sheer winner when the students went to vote. When it was pushed out to the community and the parents, that's what pushed it over to Ice Mountain of, it was the Yetis. So, you know, and I know there's a lot, a lot of, it seems to be a lot of, you know, contention with that school, as well as, as Wendy Ridge. Wendy Ridge was strictly on a, a student, student choice.
Well, I, I still feel the taxpayers should've had more of a say in naming the schools.
Frank, my kids don't pay taxes. I do.
Exactly. I, I just think that's, and, and these kids are gonna be there six years, then they're gone. The school's name's gonna be there for, for years and years, but that's, I, I just, I just, I'm just opposed to it, but I, you know.
Okay, Ed, I have given you guys about fifteen minutes there to touch on...
Was there anything specific else that I didn't touch upon?
Well, you know, several of those questions that, that I recited were, were more specific, but I, and I, and I'll have to put this on the floor for the other commissioners, you know, you know, I think we should, should address the board with a letter specifically to the questions, so that you can specifically answer them. And I, and I appreciate your efforts there in, in touching on most of them, at least to the, you know, at least to a general answer. But for time's sake, I want to make sure that the public gets the same opportunity to express their concerns, so...
Well, in closing, if you wouldn't mind, entertain me just for fifteen seconds. Do you gentlemen understand that this is a fifty-four million dollar project that the, the taxpayers have brought to this county? And has brought to improving the appeal and the value of the county? Why does it seem to be, unfortunately, why does it only seem to be the county commission's concern when the names or, you know, rumors of, of bathrooms come up? I, I think that, and I, I will bear the cross just as much as I hope you do, I think that we need to open up a better relationship between the county commission and the Board of Education. You know, we work together, we, we, we don't work together very well right now. Gentlemen, I think we need to. You know, the, the students that we're teaching are gonna be your taxpayers.
But, but one of your, one of your questions was, was about the, 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 I just lost my train of thought. Give me the question again.
About the names and the bathrooms?
No.
It's a fifty-four million dollar project?
Well, yeah.
Well, you, you hinted that we're only interested on these kind of issues, which I totally beg to differ, Ed, I mean...
I mean, we approved it for the ballot, you know, and, and you, you know as well as we do, we do all the dirty work for you guys. We collect the money and then hand it all over to you. So, you know, and, and I'm okay with that, 'cause I realize in a rural community, you know, many times the school board is the, the big winner of all the funds, you know, that's, that's par for the course, but, uh, you know, to sit there and say that, you know, we're only interested because there was a ruckus about the names, or, uh, you know...
The reason we...
Other issues, and, and then, you know, I'll, I'll jump down to the bathroom issue, just like Commissioner Cannon said, don't ever come to me with a, with a transgender proposal of any sort. And, and although you've said you agree with us totally, I'm just telling you for future reference, 'cause I, I see it happen in states all around us, and I'll never say yes to any way, shape, or form, I don't care what judge tells me this or that, or whatever, I'll stand on that one. So, uh, and I, and, and you may feel the same, or you may not, but I've, I would just like to stick that in there, like Commissioner Cannon did as well, that I, I won't budge on that.
Train of thoughts coming back.
But, uh...
The reason we got involved in this was because the people, we had people call us and, and were concerned about it, and, and we didn't wanna blow them off.
I understand.
And that's the reason we have this meeting here tonight, because we had a lot of people call and, and were concerned, and if, if we hadn't addressed this, then they say, well, what the hell is that commission, they don't even, they don't even pay attention to us. So that's the reason we had this meeting, because we had a lot of calls and a lot of people concerned about it.
It, it just seems, it's, it just seems very frustrating, you know, this is exactly the same things that has been told to everybody, they're, you know, we're as open as open can be, and, you know, everything has been, I, I have to give kudos to the review, it has been on front-page news for a multitude of months, years, about, you know, about the, uh, the school. Front page, above the fold, walk by it in the store, you should be able to see it. So, but I, I definitely appreciate you all entertaining, and I hope that it has opened, answered some questions.
I, I, I think I understood what you were trying to say, but, but, um, I, I definitely think that, uh, we're a little more integrated than that, this is just sort of became a spectacle, because we three knew that, uh, there's a lot of past commissions that would've felt comfortable to sit on their hands, and just, it would've been easier just not bringing it up. But we wanted to prove to the people that reached out to us that, that we were willing to bring it to the forefront, and, and I would argue that we've, as of late especially, worked together pretty extensively with, you know, with the water, the hospital, the, the sheriff's office, you know, with the, you know, the SOR, School Resource Officers. So I would definitely argue that, that it's, you guys are not only important to us just when some major spectacle happens, it, it may seem that way, because this is getting, gotten blown up, but that's definitely not how I feel. I do know that it's often said that, you know, we taking the money and we hand it to you, but it's a lot more integrated than that, and, and I'm sure the sheriff could speak, you know, uh, there's, there's a lot of paperwork that goes involved with tax deputies, and we bear the load of that, and I, I agree with you though, I, I think that, I don't want this to end adversarial, where, where...
Oh, no, no, not at all.
But I agree with you, I think we could work together more in the future, and, um, and, and I think that this is, this should be a good thing, this is an exercise of us getting together, so...
Well, I have to say, Commissioner, uh, Hot, we, uh, we definitely don't take that money and go to Walmart with it.
I know.
Uh, you know, we educate your, your grandchildren, your children.
As long as I'm sitting here, don't come near me.
But, uh... Well, gentlemen, would you all care to, uh, to have, I have a copy of Policy 6200, makes fine reading, uh...
No, I'm, I'm fine. I think, I think we have some people out there that may wanna ask the question, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna give the public the same opportunity to, uh, talk to us.
Okay. To be fair, you're saying 6200, in your opinion, clearly illustrates how it should've been going about, and you guys thoroughly did that, and you're, and you're...
Yeah, we, we followed the term, but then we also opened it up, we relinquished some of our capabilities, is that probably the best, best term, our capabilities, and we felt that it was necessary to give it to the taxpayers, taxpayers and to the public.
Okay.
Let me, I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
What if you guys had've told the engineer, the arch, whoever, that you wasn't changing the name of the schools, what would've happened?
They would've just put a dust around it, Slainsville on it, because that's not changing them, leaving them the same.
But did they, did they want them changed?
They don't care. None of them are from here.
The SBA stays out of that.
Yeah, they don't.
Yeah.
They could care less.
Okay, so, so this was our, we done it, our board done it because they wanted to do it, it wasn't, it wasn't something that...
Well, for one, though, each school is given a specific number.
Why, why, why do we, why do we even want them to try to change the name of the school in the beginning?
Okay.
What was that about? Why, why we have to do that?
Okay, why do we even change, entertain changes?
Yeah.
Because we're redistricting, there's gonna be lines of change. For example, right now, the students that go to, uh, that will go to the new Wendy Ridge Elementary, that district now line will go up from mountaintop east.
Yeah. So, Commissioner Cannon, you know your kids will go to Augusta, or Wendy Ridge School?
The, uh, all the students that are in Slainsville, or, uh, all the students that are in Springfield-Greenspring will now be going to South, South Fork Elementary, you know? We're, we're changing, and everybody, I know everyone's getting tired of, you know, yeah, you're closing, you know, five schools, turn to three. No, we're, we are closing those buildings, and we are opening up three new schools with new district lines. Now, Slainsville had a very miniscule, you know, there was a very small number, because it, it just be, we were hemorrhaging money with, uh, John Jay at this point, with 21 students. We had to do something, had to be fiscally responsible, had to do something. So we closed that, so Slainsville had already absorbed what they were going to absorb. Uh, but the two, two other schools, you know, there's, there's a large number of students that are gonna come, you know, redistricting is gonna change a lot of things.
In the names you mentioned, you were, you were trying to, I didn't understand what you meant, were you trying to say that the individuals that were due to be appointed to that board also happened to be some of your complainants? And that was their opportunity to...
Honestly, no, I, I'm not throwing any stones, I was just, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this was a, you know, I wanted to know, everyone to know these names, because, just to show the diversity. You know, that everyone, we tried to hit every area within our county.
I got you.
You know, just not tan, towns, but, you know, different demographics. You know, we, we didn't do this on a whim, this, this took a lot of thought and a lot of, and a lot of people's, a lot of people thought. We really appreciate you all's time.
Yeah, I can appreciate you gentlemen coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. If I can say one more, we talked during border review time that we had a tax appeal going to the state, that taxpayer withdrew, 'cause that call would've been denied, so we won by default on that one.
Okay.
The one we talked in length.
They withdrew.
Yeah, they withdrew.
Okay, I will open the meeting up for a chance for, uh, any of our, uh, public in attendance to speak on the, uh, schools issue at this time.
You wanna...
Yes, ma'am.
Come up, Brian?
Mr. President, if I could just remind him to please come up to the microphone.
Yeah, you'll need to come to the microphone, 'cause it's almost impossible to hear you back there on the...
I want you guys to bear with me, I'm not a speaker, but here I am. Before I begin, I wanna thank the county commissioners for your time. I sit before you as a community member and a parent of Slainsville Elementary to state the facts of what happened at our school. Friday, January 6th, at 10:42, a message came across the Remind App to the PTO group members only. A meeting was happening to discuss the school name at 3:15 that day. Not all parents and our community were made aware. No papers sent home and no notice from the Board of Education. Approximately 13 people attended and came up with three names. Two came from teachers and one from a PTO group member who could not make the meeting but set the suggestion in. Monday, January 9th, a Facebook post came across the school's page notifying forms were going home and to vote. This post also included a deadline, the post was gone a few hours later, along with anything that was posted under the profile name. This is the day the children voted in the school and the form sent home to parents. On this form, there was no option to make a name suggestion. Three names and one choice mentioning a field trip. My husband spoke briefly at the board meeting that night. January 11th, an article in the paper about the renaming of schools after all this had taken place. And it states, "Everyone that's involved is going to have a say." No notice from the school's administration, the superintendent, or the Board of Education before the rename process and voting occurred in Slainsville School. So how was any input given, or anyone have any say in the matter? A child spoke up about the field trip being mentioned in the school the day of voting. The president of the board was made aware, and I spoke about it at the board meeting on February 13th. Two other schools reached out to their community and parents for input. One article was printed in the paper about the renaming stating the deadline was January 20th. I later found out that this was extended by two weeks, but nothing was done to address or correct the issues for Slainsville. On February 7th, a board meeting was canceled due to the agenda not being posted, but the names were revealed. February 13th, a board meeting occurred and principals did not present, which on February 7th, Mr. Poncian was heard stating, "You are going to come back Monday evening and do your presentation." February 21st, at an LSIC meeting and a regular board meeting, it occurred at Slainsville Elementary. A presentation for the new name was shared. As a parent or a community member, were we made aware? No. Did the board have it posted on the agenda? No. Has anything been sent home in regards of the new name except for the voting form? No. Were residents from Ice Mountain there? Yes. Were Ice Mountain people thanked for coming? Yes. All facts. I've seen arguments that it was an LSIC meeting, so of course they would discuss it. Let's go with that logic, but an effort was made for Ice Mountain residents, but not for the parents? This could've been an opportunity, opportunity to come together with the community and parents, but yet again, an opportunity missed. At the meeting, the Slainsville Administration said from the beginning of the school year that the power of yet was adopted. Why was this motto used on any of the choices presented to parents and the children, not to mention a field trip promised? On the voting form sent home, one line read, "Coincidentally, our school mindset mission is the power of yet." Also stated, "If our school is named Ice Mountain, students will have the opportunity to go on a guided tour." The lack of communication and input leads me to believe an agenda was being pushed for one particular name. We've heard that the field trip was an afterthought, and it was, it wasn't promised, but it's there in black and white, and how can it be an afterthought when the same day the children voted, it was sent home to parents? The whole process has been flawed, lack of communication, community involvement, discrepancy in how it was handled from one school to the next, and no accountability on how the administration of Slainsville Elementary, the Board of Education, and the superintendent handled the renaming process. We have heard it was the CEFP decision, not a BOE issue. On January 22nd, Ms. Pollan made a motion to uphold the committee decision. The motion was passed. This was the vote that denied all the opportunity to have a choice of keeping the original names. After speaking to CEFP committee members, we have heard there was never a vote, or a decision, nothing made, but a motion was made to uphold it. One thing we can all agree on is fairness, honesty, transparency, and integrity, all what our community deserves. We as parents and community members deserve answers. And again, why wasn't any guidelines or process for all schools made to follow? Why were there no town meetings held to discuss the renaming of the schools? What happened in Slainsville Elementary School the day of voting? We are welcoming new children into our schools? If parents of the existing Slainsville Elementary received no notice before it happened, was there any attempt to connect with the new families? This brings it back to the most important question that I have heard from CEFP committee members, I have heard from the community, why wasn't the community and parents allowed the opportunity to keep their current names, or to have it as a voting option? Thank you. Do we have any questions or anything?
Any questions, commissioners?
Okay.
That was a lot.
I know, I apologize. I think it threw it all, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on up.
I ain't much on speaking, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but...
Well, those are the, those are the best kind, we're not planning on...
Slainsville is my heritage, and I think it's pretty sad that our board is doing what they're doing, um, but first and foremost, most of these people sitting here know that we actually have two Slainsville schools in Slainsville, and I own the one, that is the original one. And I can take you guys out there today and I can show you the names on the chalkboard, because in the back of the old schoolhouse, it has the old chalkboard up there, and there's several names on there that you can see plainly.
George Leish, right?
Yes, sir. And, uh, I was talking to a gentleman here a couple weeks ago, Donald Hevner, and he, he has, he has told me a lot of things about that school from his dad, which, uh, assumed that, you know, they pretty much grew up there all their life. But the reason why we have Slainsville, and I didn't know this until I was talking to him, but the reason why it was called the Mustangs was because the road that goes through in front of the old schoolhouse was the, uh, horse buggy trail back in the day. And just a little history, that's why I wanted to come up here and say that, but I just think it's kinda sad that, you know, we're, we have a board that wants to change these names, we're, excuse me, but we're not Yetis. And I don't want my grandkids going to a school that says Ice Mountain Yetis. I mean, where do you come up with a name like that? We don't even have, Slainsville is not even connected to Ice Mountain, and I, I hope the board members hear this, or see it, or whatever, but we're not even connected to them. I mean, they're five miles from Slainsville, it's a Cape and Bridge area. Uh, and on the water situation, that was the other thing I, I wanted to talk about. I was approached here a few months ago about, you know, we're building the school and we're gonna send water out that way, and I don't know if you guys have anything to do with the water, uh, the city water, or whatever. And the, where they wanna put this tower is not on the firehouse lot, it's on a piece of ground that I used to own, which sits above my farm. And lo and behold, today, I was informed by the neighbor that lives on the top of the hill from me, the guy that owns the ground now, they went to him and told him that either you give us two acres, or we'll condemn the two acres.
That's, that was the PSD that, or the, the...
I don't know who the company was, or who come out.
Just to clarify, George, they, there's gonna be two, two tanks. The tank that they're talking about is gonna provide them enough pressure to have, to have sprinklers. The tank you're talking about is gonna be sitting out on Braddock, off of Braddock Road on the right.
On top of...
Well, that's where they, they're hoping.
On the top of the hill there, above my farm?
Yeah, so they're gonna, they're, they're two separate tanks, they are gonna have a tank for the, for the schools, so that they can have, have, uh, the fire supr, or the sprinkler system, because they need so much pressure to do that. So that's why that is.
I can't speak for the guy, the gentleman that owns it now, but if I still owned it...
And they may have told him that.
If I still owned it, somebody'd have a fight on their hands, because they would not come to me and tell me that I had to give them two acres, or they were gonna condemn two acres. Uh, I just don't think that's right, but I appreciate you all's time, and this is the first meeting I've ever come to, so, and I'm not a speaker. That's just my point.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
You must've buried a heart.
Anyone else like to speak?
Ms. Sowers?
Thank you. I came through the first old school, the one he's talking about, and we have three generations in Slainsville. Ice Mountain has a Cape and Bridge address, but I don't even know if the people at Slainsville School know that. Also, they probably don't know about the second walking trail that's in the woods that was put in by, um, a scout, that's Gary Edwards's nephew. That was a lot of money spent in the back of the school ground, through the woods, and there's two bridges, and I just heard that, uh, some other people just recently fixed a one bridge, that was money donated, and Mr. Poncian knew about that. They had to get permission from him, because Park and Rec was no longer in charge of that. So that section is still there, trees have been labeled, so that young children could know what kind of a tree it is, but that's been a few years ago, and, um, I don't know... But that's been a few years ago, and I don't know if they'll do anything about a walking trail, but the second day they started to work at the school, they took up the walking trail, and that's when all the people out there got really upset. And then we didn't, we as a Ruatan or community didn't even know they were voting on changing the name to Slainsville. We saw that sign out there, but we thought that was like an area. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Ms. Sowers. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Walter Long, and I went to Slainsville Elementary, and I thank you all for what you all do, but I'm going to speak against the third bathroom. Now, I know I heard what you all heard, but I think them just even putting another bathroom like that is paving the way for something bad on down the future. You don't need to spend that much time in the bathroom. If you've got two bathrooms, you do your business, you get out, you get back to class. I think they do need to crack down on teaching our kids. I've raised four boys, five, count my stepson, and I think they need to crack down a little bit more in our school system. I am also a bus driver at this appointed time. I know we've lost a lot of kids because a lot of them homeschool. I encourage people to homeschool their kids at the rate we're going inside our school The other concern that I got, I heard, and I don't know if this is true, they need to change the name because they can get rid of all the employees and hire back who and how they want to hire back. Now, it's something worth looking into, because there might be a loophole somewhere along the line. I am against changing Slainsville Elementary, I'm along with the rest of them. It's in Slainsville Elementary. If you want to change the district, go pick kids up farther, go pick them up farther. If John J. Cornwell's coming to Slainsville Elementary, name a John J. Cornwell, Slainsville Elementary, just like they did Springfield. Other than that, I don't think there, I didn't have nothing wrote down, I was just coming, once again, like my fellow George was talking, I didn't have much to talk about, but I'm grateful that it sounds like all three of you all stand against that stupid bathroom that should not even be brought up in this great courthouse. But that's about all I have to say. I appreciate it for your time, and I appreciate what you all do. And that's why, the people out there, if they can see, if anybody's watching, vote. Get out and vote. Get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
My name's Joyce Jason Sowers. My grandfather is Joyce Jennings Sowers. The first thing I'd like to say is thank you all for what you said here tonight, specifically, Mr. Eglinger, I appreciate you being very specific about the word transgender and the absolute insanity that comes along with us even bringing that to our community. You know, when I was in kindergarten, all the way to fifth grade, that wasn't even on my radar. I was worried about having recess twice a day, taking a nap, and I thought it was the greatest thing ever. So to think here on February twenty-eighth, that I'd be at a county commission meeting talking about the thought of even putting a transgender bathroom in our elementary schools is absolutely disturbing, and I hope that you continue to keep that sternness, as well as Mr. Cannon and Mr. Hart, because it's appalling. It's appalling. You talk about our culture and the community as a nation, the status of this nation, you know, we see things going to the wayside, and it's going to take community members, it's going to take taxpayers, it's going to take Christian people that this country was founded on to be concerned and to do something about it. This is something that everyone can do about it, you know? We can come to a public hearing and have the opportunity to be able to speak about concerns that we have. You know, I appreciate Mr. Hart speaking about the names of the schools, because I think it's also hard to believe that you would come into the town of Slainsville, or the town of Augusta, and it'd be Ice Mountain or Windy Ridge.
Might go to, might go to your farm, probably, they'd see windy acres, right? So they might...
Somebody might be confused, you know what I mean? I know when I ride through some places in a road tractor, there's a town attached to a, a school, you know? When you go by Millbrook High School, there's a Millbrook Avenue, you know what I mean? Even something with a, a large place like Winchester and the surrounding area where they'd have multiple schools. But it would be hard to believe riding through Slainsville, and it wouldn't be Slainsville Elementary. And if the old school was used as a, a, you know, daycare facility or something like that, that could be Slainsville Daycare, you know? The elementary school is still the elementary school. I, I wanted to mention that about the names, because what does a Yeti have to do with academia? Academia, you know? A Yeti is an imaginary, made-up thing about the Himalayan Mountains. If you Google it, like I did the first time I heard somebody say, "An Ice Mountain Yeti", you know? I think that's absurd that we would bring that into our education, you know? We talk about other things that are so much more important. I don't even understand why a Yeti would be a mascot.
Let me ask you a question. They, the Ice Mountain, do they have, are there people down there that have kids that go to the Slainsville?
I was going to say...
See, that's, that's the thing I was wondering about, because I don't even think there's kids that want Ice Mountain. W-when I was a kid, we went to Ice Mountain to get chocolate. There was an old gentleman down there, and, and I'm sure Maria and Joyce know, I can't remember his name, but he made chocolate candy. We'd get out and go across the river and get, but, yeah, I don't think there's anybody from Ice Mountain that even goes to Slainsville School.
No, sir. And my grandmother, my grandfather could speak about it more than I can, because I've only been to Ice Mountain once, to have a state landmark in our backyard in the eighth grade for West Virginia History, we, we never took a field trip. It was never important, you know? Ice Mountain's never been some destination, you know? When we have that here in Hampshire County, you know? I was a Golden Horseshoe winner, not that that's even important, but there was people in Hardy County that could tell me more about Ice Mountain, and I literally live, you know, five miles from it. But Ice Mountain is a gated community. There's a lot of wealthy people that have a second home there, you know, doctors, people from somewhere else. I just, I don't understand what that would have to do with Slainsville. And then the Yeti thing, I just think it's very silly, you know? I just don't understand what that would have to do with academics. We have Ruatan meetings once a month. I can go on the record to say that the superintendent, Jeff Ponson, has only been there once, and he didn't have much to say when it came to information. And many people there, you know, Dave Cannon, he's even a member of the Slainsville Ruatan Club, many community members asked questions, and he didn't have information. But he also made a commitment to come back to bring more information once he was made aware. You know, Bernie Hart, a, a board member, is also a member of the Ruatan Club, and he was also asked questions that Jeff didn't have an answer to, and, and Bernie didn't have an answer as well. What I'm getting at with that is many community members have been in the dark on a decision that was made by taxpayers, you know? So, you know, Mr. Ed Morgan, he mentioned different people that was picked for the CFP Committee. I could go on the record to say that many of those people that I know closely, one of them's my father, was never contacted about anything. No big decisions, nothing with a transgender bathroom, nothing with the names of the schools. My mother-in-law was on there as well for Slainsville, Jody Stotler, you know? I, I really believe that when we select these people, it can't just be a name in the community. I really believe that you have to reach out to them, or however these meetings are had, I think there should be more specific detail in discussion, you know? So many times, people in authority just want permission, and then they want to have their own discretion to do what they want, once they have been given that permission. The first part would be with the funds, you know? I've talked to my grandfather many times here tonight about the Hoy Schoolhouse. I, I thought it was great that George would talk about, you know, the old Slainsville Schoolhouse, but back in the day, there, you know, there was a lot more elementary schools because you had to walk to school, you know? And my pappy would tell stories, you know, he might even come up here after me, but the Hoy Schoolhouse is still standing out there at Hoy, you know? I'm not saying that tomorrow we could go have elementary school in it, you know, and have class, but we can't be wasteful with the, the money that we have been given, you know, from the taxpayers. Obviously, it has to come from the working people, which now I can say as myself, you know, out of college, I'm a taxpayer, you know? So not just that I pay taxes, or one day, Lord willing, I would have children that would come through the school system, it's just important in general, you know? So with the Slainsville Elementary School, there, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that school in particular, you know? They talk about the well sometimes, and I'm glad that you all mentioned that for like a water source this evening. The Slainsville Ruatan has great water, and it has a well, you know? No one's ever talked about drilling another well, and I don't believe that it can be forgot with a new school, you know, that it would even just be a reserve idea, you know? There's good water there. With the soccer field and talking about locations, there's been over a hundred thousand dollars that is on the record from the Slainsville Ruatan Club and Hampshire County Park and Association or Recreation, however that title is, that has been raised from the community, from Hampshire County, for that park out there and that facility. So although it might be a great pad for a school to be built on, I don't think the intentions can be forgot for what that facility did for the community. There's many people that would bring complaints and concerns to the Ruatan meetings, you know, about using the trail or the track. There's many people in the community that would walk that thing daily, you know? Ken Yoder with the Powell Factory, we have some neighbors as well, not that their names are coming to my mind, but that's a, it's a, just a great facility to have for the community. So in the plans for a new school, I don't think that it could be just brushed off either. I think that that has to be something taken into consideration, just as you would the planning of the school itself. I don't see why, when we would spend millions of dollars and we would build new facilities, why we would, we would lessen the options that are there for the other, not just the kids, but the community members, you know? Someone in the community mentioned at the last Ruatan meeting that there's been provisions to protect the little garden out there at Slainsville Elementary School that is very miniscule. I believe there was a grant to get it. Eli Misty helped them out, you know, with the PTO and things of that nature. But that, we're talking in the last five to 10 years. I mean, there's people here tonight that can tell you about the history of the soccer field, the baseball field, the walking trail, and how long that's been established, and like I say, the over a hundred thousands of dollars that was raised, you know, that can't be forgot either, you know? Me speaking here tonight, I'm not telling you it's going to change anything, but it's also a good feeling, and it helps you when you look in the mirror, that you come and you try to pre-present things, or ideas, or concepts to people that can, you know? The last thing I want to leave you with is, going forward, with all this money that's being spent, I come back to the, the issue of waste, you know? I'm not on the school board, I didn't run, you know? That'd be my fault for not taking responsibility, or anything of that nature. But I think going forward, we have to make decisions that would be the best with the money and the funds that are going to be used. I think there's a lot of waste, and it's, it's a shame. You know, some of the things I've mentioned tonight about the, the park out there, you know, about the no-care mentality when it comes to putting another track out there, you know, where the septic fields would be on the existing playground, any of that kind of stuff. I hate that there might be a lackluster, you know, desire to try and keep things that are important, you know? Just like going into this school, the contractors reaching out about a name, you know? I think that, that's a very simple thing. Hey, it's going to be the Slainsville Elementary School, it's going to be the Romney Elementary School, you know? That's when we have the power. That's something that we have control over. So, you know, whether it be with the commission, or with more community insight, I think there nee-needs to be a, a better, you know, medium of communication. You know, I'm not saying that social media is the answer, or that the Hampshire Review's the answer, but in a small community like this, I don't think there should be such a disconnect. You know, that's, that's the problem. I can, I can stand or sit here this evening on record and say that I truly believe, after the people who've come to Ruatan, or I've talked to in the community, that many people would have not voted for the bond, like you said, Commissioner Hart, if they would have known how this was going to play out. So, I, like I say, I want to thank you all very much for your time, thank you for the opportunity for us to speak. I appreciate your, I appreciate your stance, Mr. Eglinger, and Mr. Hart, and Mr. Cannon as well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming in.
I want to thank you guys for your time this evening. New schools in the county were built, and they was allowed to keep their names in the town that they was built in. The first board meeting I attended, I asked, "Who was in charge of the names, changing the names? Why didn't the names have to be changed?" Stated in, in the paper, I wanted to make sure everyone knows that it's not the board making these decisions, it's the CF, or the CEFP Committee. They expressed for all new schools, they wanted new names. A petition has been going around the communities. If you are in favor of the schools being offered the opportunity to keep their current names, or have their current names as a voting option, please sign. In eight days, there's four hundred and five people have signed all, from all over the county, Romney, Slainsville, Levels, Cape and Bridge, Augusta, Points, and Springfield. There, this is with limitation to be posted in certain groups. So I am asking, again, why do the names need to be changed? No one is demanding the names to stay the same, but to have it as an option which was denied to all of us parents, community members, and the taxpaying citizens. We deserve a choice in this matter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I'll take one more from the public comment there.
I think it's best for last, right?
I almost said Mrs. Barnes.
Barnes, Barnes piles, I get it all. Most people in this room know me, my name is Jill Barnes piles.
You've got some hot in you, too.
I have double hot in me, sir, yes I do. So I'm here, what's that?
We won't blame you for that.
I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen. I recently gave a speech at a Board of Education meeting, and I began it in the following manner. You like, you love the new names, you hate the new names, you think the new names are okay, but you would have preferred a different name. What I want to talk about is how we got to a place where there's so much contention regarding the naming of the new buildings. I want to talk about what I perceive to be as a mismanagement of the process and the pushing of an agenda where the community's voice did not matter. Regardless of this, I'm under no illusions that the speech that I give today will result in any significant change. But my goal in speaking tonight is to help Hampshire County Commissioners, other citizens within the county, better understand the viewpoint of the concerned citizens, and to hopefully hold the Hampshire County Board of Education and the Board Office accountable for their actions. So my involvement with this process began sincerely approximately two years ago, and we've asked from the very beginning, "Why do the names have to change?" What was the answer? The committee said so. We offered compromises. Why can't we keep Augusta and add on the geographical tag, the only other name that's been listed in CEFP documents and the review on Board of Education notes? Why can't we combine those? No, the committee said so. Can we keep our mascot? Can we keep our colors? No, the committee said so. No, the committee said so. So during that process, you know, we're like, well, who can we talk to about this? We're told it's not a Hampshire County Board of Education issue, don't go there. Clearly, that was wrong. So that being said, if it's a Board of Education issue, did they attempt to poll the community in any way regarding their feelings? No, they didn't. How many polls have I done? Three to date. I can tell you, nobody on those polls at all was in favor. Did they visit the schools or hold town hall meetings the way they were supposed to on the issue? No, they didn't. Were they neglectful in doing so? Absolutely. So at the time that the voting in the schools took place, there was only one of these three schools that was in an active state of construction. We've been told that it takes approximately eighteen months from the time the first block is laid, which hasn't occurred yet, um, to completion, and that's perfect conditions. So why was this issue being pushed to a vote so early? We've had comments, oh, the architects need to blah, blah, blah. If we took an extra month and really listened to the community, would it have made a difference in the building of the schools and the architect ordering materials? I don't personally think so. Not only that, but our principals, our administrators were given a short two-week timeframe to accomplish this goal. Only two weeks, okay? So even though additional concerns were raised, the issue was still pushed and consulting the community as a whole didn't happen. The Board of Education meeting in which the names were originally supposed to be announced and where community members such as myself, who were opposed to the renaming, were to speak, was not held because the board and the Board Office was negligent. They did not post their agenda in a timely manner. I don't care if someone was on a vacation, you can't tell me that there's not someone else in that building who wasn't capable of posting an agenda, especially when they knew such an important issue was going to be discussed. So the new names still got announced because they called it a press conference, but we didn't get to speak. So would the slowing of the process and exploring concerns really have mattered to the overall process? Or was the issue just pushed through with hopes that citizens wouldn't have time to coordinate and express their concerns? So to give a little background about how Augusta Elementary approached the process. Because our administrator was given this directive that we, she sent forms home, we were given instructions. Pick three new options for names, mascots and colors. Well, we're a little rebellious at Augusta Elementary, and I'm gonna take a little bit of credit for that, because forty-seven percent of us wrote back, no change, okay? Then, an additional percentage wrote in comments, if no change was an option, we would have picked that. The percentage jumped up to sixty-one percent of those that returned their ballots, that additional ballot, would have pu- would have picked no change. But they're, oh, what about the people from Romney? We gotta consider them. Sixty ballots were sent to the students at Romney who are potentially going to be moved to this new facility. Nine were sent back. That's how concerned people from Romney were that they wanted the name to change. Nine out of sixty, do the math, it's not very high percentage. So despite parents and students, because we collaborated, sending this form back in, Mr. Poncione showed up at my PTO meeting and I said, this is what we want, is our vote going to be honored? He flat out said, no. I said, why? The committee said so. Then there was a discussion, so where do we go from now? And then that's how it got to the Board of Education. Suddenly, it was a board issue, whereas before it wasn't. So let's talk a little bit about the CEFP Committee. It's governed by the State Policy sixty-two hundred. I've read it, I've printed it. It's very boring, as Mr. Morgan said. That document relates to how this committee is supposed to operate. Nowhere in there does it mention that this committee is supposed to be responsible for picking new names, deciding how new names are picked. So who tasked this committee with this responsibility? I've read Board of Education notes. This board didn't, the last board didn't, so where did it come from? Did they magically decide themselves they should do this? Mr. Morgan said it was equally distributed across the county in terms of people that were picked. One person from Augusta resigned because they didn't feel heard. Was Augusta told that so that we could pick another representative? No. The other representative from Augusta no longer had a student at Augusta by the time these meetings were taking place. So did, was Augusta equally represented? No, it was not. And even if this full committee had made a recommendation, that is what it would be, a recommendation. Even what they said to do with these schools, build new schools, close new schools, fix the gym, was a recommendation and we put it to a vote and the community got to decide. They didn't say, do this, and we said, okay, we'll do it. We voted on it. That didn't happen with these names, even though we asked for it repeatedly. So why are we talking about the CEFP Committee, as already mentioned? The board voted to uphold the CE- CEFP Committee recommendation, or this directive as it's been called. I've spoken personally with about a third of the individuals who served on that committee. Every single one of them said, there was no vote. Most of them said, we don't even remember really talking about naming the schools as being a big issue. Some of them said, I didn't know the names were gonna change. I thought they were gonna say Augusta, Romney and Slansville. Others said, I wouldn't be opposed to it staying the same. So really, can we say this was a true directive from this committee that they all voted on? I don't believe so. But the Board of Education still voted to approve it, even though we drew their attention to that fact. We asked, who was in the meeting when this was decided? We were told, we don't know, we didn't keep attendance. Well, what documents do you have to prove that this was discussed? We don't have those either. I asked for a copy of this directive. It doesn't exist on paper. It was only ever disseminated by Mr. Poncione to principals in a meeting or when he popped up to the school. So why is the Board of Education continuing to support a directive that was either grossly misrepresented to them at best, or lied to at worst? As already mentioned, the process at Augusta, Slansville and Romney was very different. Some parents got a lot of input, some did not. Why was there no standardized process and profi- procedures for all the school to follow? I don't know. Why was there not equality in the parent and community input from the school? Or to the school from, from school to school? I'm not sure. So the Board of Education and Superintendent have repeatedly thrown out the phrase, we are consolidating five schools into three new schools. However, many people in this community truly view these as new facilities and buildings for the existing school to move towards. Not new schools, new buildings. And when they voted, that's what they voted for. I've had more than one person come up to me and talk to me about this issue. I commiserate with you and your food line story because it's happened to me too. You know, they said, if I knew this was gonna happen and this is how it was gonna be handled, I would have voted for that. And I'm seriously considering not voting for anything the Board of Education puts out the next time because this process has not been transparent. So in closing, all I'm asking for is accountability, and I hope we reach a place where that can occur. For the board to accept responsibility for their actions, for voting for a directive that wasn't a directive and not listening to the community on an issue that they clearly feel very strongly about. Just an aside, you know, the petition that's floating around, I think that's pretty impressive. We have over four hundred people who have voted, and this is not just online, this is on paper, more on paper than online. One of those committee people that were mentioned on that document, document I had to give Mr. Morgan, he's out there handing out these petitions and getting signatures on it. So in closing, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. And hopefully that shed some light on where I'm coming from, where the Augusta community is coming from and why we feel so strongly about this process. Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am, I, I appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, and I'm gonna close the, uh, time that we've allotted and, and went past for, uh, comments, but all important from both sides, so, uh... Gentlemen, do you have a, uh, recommendation at this time for, uh, further action on the subject from the Commission?
What are you, you, you looking to send your letters or what you, what do you?
My recommendation, Commissioner Hart, would be to, uh, send a letter to the Board of Education uh, with these highlight- lighted points that I read earlier and anything that you gentlemen would want to add based on our, what we've heard this evening or change.
I, I, I would move that, that we do that. I'd also move that we be provided s- some documentation as to how this process took place as far as the naming goes. Uh, they, they talked about the committees and, and I wasn't even aware of any of that, and maybe I should have been, but, but I, but I wasn't aware of those committees. I, I move that we, that we send them a letter expressing our concern about, about the naming of the schools and also about the, the bathrooms that we talked about. And, uh, requesting some, some documentation as to how, how this process was, 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 uh, was done.
Will your motion include the, uh, bullet points illustrated by Commissioner Eg- Eglinger? Okay, that was the main thing. Uh, I'll second the motion and then with a little bit of discussion, I think that would be fair to the, the board that, that they see the questions illustrated so they have a fair, you know, uh, chance to respond to each one specifically.
Yeah, my goal here is, is to, one, gentlemen, put those questions exactly out there as close as we can get them to what the people have asked of us. And then number two, to give the, the board a fair chance to, uh, answer and, and, and show accountability. So, uh, if we would, uh, so Commissioner Hart has made that in the form of a motion and Commissioner Cannon has seconded that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
That further add that you, with that response, we can, uh, as commisters refer to that if we have any more phone calls or questions. Cause I'm sure there'll be a lot more phone calls about it, so it'd be nice to have an official response to refer to.
Correct. Agree. Okay, gentlemen, uh, we are down to the maintenance portion of our meeting. Um, what else do we have, Eric?
We have the states, we have a good bit of ramp forms aside. More of a review of the state, we've got a good place to start.
Thanks for coming, Sheriff.
Emma June, we're not done.
Pass my word.
I notice she's nodding off. Did you report on any of that?
You didn't have enough papers for that, did you?
Huh?
I said, I guess you'll have to read the review. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Let me see them, where's, see if, if my old, my...
Mr. President.
Wait a minute, can I see him first?
Oh, yes, sir. I thought you'd let him see him first.
Nah.
I'm getting sleepy.
See, that's how much he cares about you, Bob. Gentlemen, I think we can fairly say we didn't sit on our hands.
No, we're not known for doing that.
Here we go. Uh, Mr. President, I move that the Commission approve all probate orders, fiduciary appointments and qualifications and all fiduciary bonds, coming, coming before the clerk in the va- vacation of the Commission since its last regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We will vote on the motion as stated by Commissioner Hart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Eric, don't forget that, that hearing end. And I know it's been, it's been, you, you got it in there, okay.
Housekeeping works, I'll float it today. All right, so these are grant paperwork from Region Eight regarding several different things going on. First, uh, is a final draw for broadband project, may kept the presented force, prepared force, and, uh, that closes out with eight thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars, uh, left in the balance. And, um, there's also a final pay request for the same grant. Final pay request is in the amount of, yeah... Anyway, brings the whole, the whole amount of the award to, uh, four hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-seven thousand. So that finishes that up, closes out the grant, these two documents here. Um, so I'd like to start with that.
Okay, Mr. Cannon.
Close out, this is the final.
Oh, we need the President to sign these, right?
Yes.
Okay, I move we authorize the President to sign the Community Development Block Grant for the water sewer, uh, in parts and the, uh, request for payment.
This is the broadband.
Broadband. Oh, I said waters, okay.
I'll second the motion to authorize the President to sign the final payment for the broadband project.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that the, uh, Commission allow me to sign the, uh, uh, final paperwork and closing of the, uh, broadband project for the Cave and Bridge area. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. You guys are getting a little sleepy on me.
Come on, you've got a lot of interest in here.
I move we authorize the President to sign the, uh, the final performance report for the Hampshire County Broadband Extension, Expansion.
Okay, it's been, we will vote on the, uh, motion as stated by Commissioner Hart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, Ms. Angie Curl sent us a, uh, this is a contract regarding the agreement for legal services for the Health Department. There's two documents involved with this agreement.
So this is the grant for the, uh, Climate Control Room in the, uh...
Yes, the Health Department.
Okay. I move we authorize the President to sign the legal service agreement between, uh, John Athie and the Hampshire County Commission.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded for the authorization of the legal services agreement between John Athie and the Hampshire County Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, you want to wait till the end?
Then we have, um, regarding the Health Department, uh, health facility, request for payment. This is our first one, all that, uh, that grant.
First draw on the grant for the Health, the Health Department?
That's the first draw, they're calling draw number two.
Okay, just, just one or two?
They're calling it number two.
Okay. I move we authorize the President to sign the, uh, draw number two for the, uh, uh, grant for the Health Department.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that the, uh, Commission President to sign the, uh, draw number two for the Health Department grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Motion passed.
One thing at a time, one thing at a ti-
G L B was down thirty-six thousand.
I see that, that was my question, uh, the prisoner credit.
What, what'd he say?
There's a credit.
Yeah, three thousand, thirty-six hundred I think.
Yeah, did you, did you see the?
Rebecca might know what that.
Yeah, I'll ask.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred seventy dollars, we got a credit.
So I'm guessing the state police rear versus us?
I hope, I mean, they, we don't want to pay theirs, I don't know, is she here?
I think I got them all there.
All right, now one last grant, this one uh is the first draw for the hospital project.
Were you talking about the Brownfields?
Yes.
Okay. I move we authorize the president to sign the uh, the uh Brownfield uh, is this, is this the draw for it? The first draw for the, for the uh hospital for the Brownfield grant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission president signed the uh grant for the first draw on the Brownfields project of the old hospital. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mm-hmm. We gotta, I think we gotta be done by nine o'clock.
Hmm? You what?
We gotta be done by nine o'clock Bob.
Sorry, me, what else we got besides this? I went over on the invoice now, twice. Have you looked at the invoices David?
What's that?
Have you looked at the invoices?
Yeah, yeah.
I move that we pay the invoices as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the invoices presented since our last meeting be approved, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
Is that all you got clerk? Here, I move we have all.
Mr. President, if there's nothing further, I'd move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll probably second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned.